I'm gonna, I, I'll check it out. You wanna use quality one? You don't wanna get a, uh, it's a lot of bullshit. Boy, draw it out if you want to. I'm hesitant on doing that because I'm so conscious, I'm like so mileage conscious. Which is good, it keeps me at bay. It's actually really a big tool for me. She's a good one, she really liked it. So once I get the little carrier in the back.
Thanks for being here with us this evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Delray Oaks City Council. Can I have a roll call, please?
Press in.
Here.
Here.
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Right, next item is public comment. General public comment must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. There'll be a limit of no more than three minutes per speaker. Public comment is now over.
I just realized, I just want to invite everybody to the picnic in October 4th. That's it.
Thank you for that announcement. Any other public comments? Okay, see. Is now closed. Our next item is a proclamation honoring a longtime resident of Delray Oaks, George Jackshaw. For thirty-four years of distinguished service to the city and the community. And it reads faithfully served the city of Delray Oaks for thirty-four years as a dedicated and thoughtful member of the planning commission. Having been appointed and reappointed multiple times by city councils and has served with distinction, distinction several times as the chair of the commission. Not only through his formal role in city planning, but also through his deep engagement as a longtime active member of the Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group. Always ready to pitch in, speak up, and bring neighbors together. George is civic pride and community spirit in every aspect of his life. George is affectionately known around town as Garage Sale George for founding and tirelessly running the citywide garage sale, an annual tradition. Closets, garages. Whereas George has earned the respect, admiration, and friendship of generations of residents, staff, and elected officials who have relied on his judgment, humor, and deep love for in the spirit of George's humor, we pause to recognize his legacy with a dad joke in his honor. And this is courtesy of the city manager. All right, here we go. What do you call a frog who runs a citywide garage sale? So I, Scott Donaldson, Mayor of Delray Oaks, on behalf of the city council and the entire community, do hereby recognize here's extraordinary service, leadership, and commitment to the betterment of Delray Oaks. Signed this twenty-sixth day of August, twenty twenty-five. George, I worship and honor you. Absolutely. So what I'd like to do is have you come up so I can present you with your your proclamation, but in addition to that, I have something else for you. And I, I found this in this drawer here. And it's probably been here since all the locks have been changed. But George, you're, you're the first person that I've given key.
Please state your full name. Jim Clark. George has a lot of history with this town. Coming here tonight, someone asked me how long George was on the planning commission, and here's a little known fact. Like everyone else, George had a few things to learn when he joined the planning commission. I remember one meeting when a councilperson told an applicant that they had to change something in a wall placement. Disheartened, the applicant, standing where I am, mumbled something. George jumped right up to here I am. But people could always depend on George to be open when they came to the planning commission. Open your wallet for this permit. Open your wallet for that permit. George used to keep his favorite Muppet on the dais with him. Permit the Frog. He would always do his best to maintain integrity of standards that had been sent in the past. Little did the applicants know that meant the Bronze Age standards. I asked George what he liked most about being on the PC. He told me that since he'd gotten married, it was the one place he got to make a final decision on anything. Many think George was the force behind getting the citywide garage sale going, going. And he was in many respects. What you don't know is what motivated him. His wife, unable to wade through all the crap to find her car in the garage yelling and now you know the rest of the story. Seriously, we can only wish that we can have a few more folks in Delray Oaks that are willing to put in the time, the effort to help our community to stay looking as good as it does, jump into the positive aspects of Joe Cake's efforts to bring fun events to our citizens, and as effective in getting all those signs up for the garage sale is my good friend George.
Mike Hayworth. And you guys know how good I am at this stuff. So like so many of us in the, in this city, I consider George a personal friend. And I think that's the vibe in this whole city is that we all work together in the city. I think everybody in the planning commission can say that they learned a lot from George, and most of it was good. I think that the city resident staff and the planning commission owe George a debt of gratitude and like to personally thank George for all of his years of service.
Yeah, Jerry Edlin, seventy-five, Carlton Drive. Mayor, members of the city council have not come to bury George, but to praise him. A couple things, his dedication and sacrifice, even it happens to be a Shelby. I met George back nineteen fifty-seven, third grade at Delray Oaks Elementary School. And I've been cursed, I mean blessed by his, his friendship ever since. Twenty-four years ago, he came to my house when he was on the planning commission and said, hey, we have a vacancy. We should be on it. And I said, oh, George. Well, you can't say no, George. So he walked away. I got on the planning commission. We're doing that. So anyhow, George, I, I appreciate your friendship. Loveism and dedication to the city. Okay.
On the other day. To get an award because Frank Tansky he was just it's a better place for everybody to live. Thank you, George.
Uh, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. The
with your fellow residents and neighbors in a very positive way. And, um, you know, those of us on staff, we, we, we chose public service as a career uh, and as a job. You, like all of your colleagues here, choose to do it out of the kindness of your heart and out of the love for your community, and that's to be commended. And we as staff, we really appreciate that. We need more people like you in the community who can help us and help keep this community what it is and make it better. So, thank you.
George, I just wanted to also echo what everyone said. You know, I don't sit with the planning commission very often, but when I do, it's because there's a hot issue. And I have always admired and respected how you made those about the application and not the politics and all the other stuff. You really just focus on the application and, and, and led the planning commission through the paces to, to do their job. So congratulations on your thirty-plus years of service, and it's been a pleasure working with you. All right, George. Thank you for everything, my friend. What I would like to do is take a short recess so we can go outside and have some, I think cupcakes and enjoy some time with George and, and and then we'll come back in about ten or fifteen minutes. But if you'd like to say something.
My name is George Jackshaw. I'm, I'm honored by all the words of praise, guys. I move. Thank you very much.
Okay, short recess, ten, fifteen minutes. Haven't had any.
Okay, we're reconvening after our recess and the item we'll go to next is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any council member would like to pull?
Yes, ma'am, just for clarity.
Okay, any items the public would like to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to item C1, Vice Mayor Howard.
Just for clarity, so I see the P scale, $15,000 in the initial fee also or $255, 255 per short-term rental. There's really no destination between hosted and unhosted in the contract agreement. Is there any difference in their profile or is this considering aggregate number, average number anticipating as of our account, which is 1,325? And of course, we hope for a population to grow. Does this include all short-term rentals, including non-hosted? And do we have a number to that point? Is it practically double what we have as far as hosting? Because that would bring it a little bit closer to being six of one half, doesn't mean the other. A little bit closer to what had to be, just out of curiosity.
First to the number, Laura, do you know off the top of your head what our total number of short-term rentals are? Forty?
So we can actually anticipate to be in excess of the 15,000. It's closer to the 15,000 flat rate.
Right, it's pretty close. Yeah, and yeah, and yeah, and you saw in the contract that it's the greater of the two. Yeah.
And otherwise.
All right, thank you. You have a motion to accept the consent.
Move to per.
Second, all in favor? All right, motion passes. We'll move on to the next item, which is old business. We have none. We'll move on to item seven, which is the new business. And the first item is to consider approval of contract for ClearGov for electronic budget development and management services. And I'll pass it to the city manager.
Okay, and then actually, if I can make a suggestion, maybe since we have Kristen here from Regen, just in consideration of her time being here, maybe if we can switch up the two and do the MOU with Regen first.
Okay, yeah, no problem with that. Is that something that we'll have to vote on? Or you just move right to it? Okay, so we'll move to item 7B, which is to consider approval and authorize city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with Regen Monterey and participating member agencies regarding assistance with franchise agreement matters.
Okay, I'm gonna do my best to see if we can do it right this time and share my screen. There we go. Okay, so yeah, so the item before you today is the approval of memorandum of understanding for franchise agreement matters. So basically, just for a little background, Delray Oaks and six other member agencies, well, all the member agencies in the area are responsible for solid waste collection. Seven of us have mutual franchise agreement with green waste through Regen. That started in 2010. The current term is going to end in 2030. So rather than waiting in anticipation of that, we've started a technical advisory committee among all of the seven jurisdictions to meet and talk about what we're looking for and how we want to go forward with our franchise law agreement. Most of us, myself especially, are not experts in this area, so we're looking for guidance. And so that's what this contract will do, this MOU. So the contract will be with Regen and I think the board approved it on Friday night. Is that right? Yeah, Friday night, entering into a contract with HF and H, which is a company consulting firm, which Regen uses, we're all familiar with and we all have comfort with and know that they'll lead us in the right direction. Joining in this combined collaboration is a good thing for all of us. Like I said, we don't have expertise on staff and we get economies of scale through doing this and contracting. We are obligated to be part of this. We can go like City of Monterey and we can do it on our own. I certainly would not recommend that. I don't think any of you would either. So that's why we're moving forward with this. So the, what the MOU will do is, like I said, it'll be a formal agreement between the seven jurisdictions, basically giving Regen the authority to take the lead on this and act on our behalf. One of those things is contracting with HF and H to provide the expertise to lead us forward on our negotiations and planning for this process. So what that'll do, what HF and H will do is they'll do the community engagement, the stakeholder engagement. They'll help us with development of the RFP to go out and see if there's somebody other than green waste we want to contract with. And then more importantly, they'll help us with the negotiations so that we get a good deal for our constituents. And then the MOU also then breaks out the costs and paying for that contract with HF and H. So the contract with HF and H, like I said, it'll be done phased. This is going to be a multi-year process. Phase one will be meeting with the public and meeting with each jurisdiction to get engagement and get input from the community. Then they'll solicit the document design, the solicitation document. So that's basically the RFP and they'll manage the RFP process. And like I said, the negotiations, there are experts in the room. Region staff also are experts, but those of us on the TAC committee, most of us aren't. Monterey's staff is expert, but they're not part of this process because they. So these are the participating agencies. As you all know, Carmel, Marina, Pacific Grove, Sand City, Seaside and Pebble Beach. So all of these jurisdictions are represented on our technical advisory committee. We meet, I don't know, what about what's month, Kristen? Yeah, and talk about this. And we all recommended to Regen that we go forward with hiring HF and H for this contract and that we all share the costs. So the total not to exceed is 534,620. That will be split seven ways among the jurisdictions. So the overall cost for Delray Oaks is 76,374. That won't be all at one time because, like I said, this is going to be a multi-year process. So for this year, we'll kind of go as we go and we'll get invoiced twice throughout this fiscal year. And then we'll have to come back to you all and tell you what that is and how we're going to budget for that because we didn't build that into this year's budget. Going forward in March, the technical advisory group with Regen staff will figure out an estimate for the work that's going to be done for the next fiscal year. So at least we can build something into the budgets going forward. So with that, I'm available for questions, but more importantly, Kristen O'Hara is here from Regen. She can answer the technical questions.
All right, thank you, John. I'm Chris No-Hera with Regen Communications Manager. I've been a solidly professional for the last 15 years in Monterey County. So please let me know what questions you have and I'm happy to answer them.
I suppose my question is, why is it split seven ways evenly versus by population?
That's a great question. So we do have other items within the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, that are based on population. It's a matter of resources in that case where, you know, education is skewed to the population. However, for this agreement, we believe that each agency benefits equally from the advisement of HF and H consultants. They've been in the industry many decades and the advice remains the same whether you're City of Carmel or City of Delray Oaks.
And I apologize. Thank you for being here today and answering our questions.
My pleasure.
And I apologize. Thank you for being here today and answering our questions. I should have started with that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Kristen. The first one is, what are the risks if ever the budgeted like five hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty would increase? Would the, the share of Delray Oaks will also increase automatically?
No. And so let me, let me take a step back and break down the proposal for you from HF and H. So there are four different stages to the proposal. And at every stage, there is an opportunity for Delray Oaks to back out. And so each of the phases will be built. And at that point, if Delray Oaks says, you know, it's not going the way I like, you know, we will pay for the phase we're in and then we're done. We're going to do this on our own, like the City of Monterey. The City of Monterey, however, has their own disposal company, Monterey Disposal Service at Delray Oaks does not. So there is risk in, in not participating, I would say. It helps to have a uniform program and hauler amongst all seven cities as we do currently. When you have different haulers and different programs, people could become very confused, generally speaking, and the lack of uniformity creates challenges to reach California mandates and compliance.
Thank you, Kristen. So I think my, my next question is to our beloved city manager. So do we have already this thing budgeted in our budget, or do we need to have made, you know, made adjustments?
Yeah, we don't know what the costs are going to be yet for this fiscal year. So when we have an idea of that, then we'll come back to the council and we'll amend the budget at that time.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Let me see. I think regarding public engagement, will it be through you or through the city?
No. So actually, there will be another contractor that is actually hired for public engagement that HF and H will propose. And it's really to ensure that we get stakeholder feedback from the public before we embark on this journey. And I want to remind everyone that we're not automatically going to RFP. There is discussion about whether we should renegotiate with the existing franchise hauler, which is probably the least painful and quickest. However, if there's deficiencies, areas for improvement, this is a good process to follow. However, RFP is also a good process to see what else is out there. And see how.
Thank you. And one more last question. And this is in relation to the question of council member Mike Berger. And you have explained it well, like why there's equal sharing. But my question would be, would this MOA would serve as a precedent for future agreements where small cities will bear the same equal, you know, like costs with the other cities?
Yeah, so currently, Regen Monterey spearheads a lot of the solid waste and compliance regulations on behalf of their member agencies, Delray Oaks being one of them, along with the other peninsula cities. And by having this MOU in place, we can actually tackle more mandates that are coming down the pipeline. So this really is to serve as a way for Regen to be reimbursed. However, none of this will go into play until we have full consensus from all of the different councils that choose to participate. And we'll move forward once we have approvals. And so this, this is a really good document to have to centralize efforts rather than have solid waste professionals on each of your council and your city staff. So we're happy to do the work that nobody else wants to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristen. Mayor, that's all.
All right, Vice Mayor Hallack.
Well, the very important, important questions have already been asked, so not creating echo chamber, I should try. But just to say that I do fully support best solid waste management practices. The disposal limits are finite. I believe I've heard council member Shirley that works out and represents the council, the city on your board. I think she decided, and maybe you correct me, either you respect there, but we have what a hundred years or so lifespan on our current landfill facilities. So obviously, we need to get ahead of time. You know, a lot of measures are being taken, different disposal methods of organic waste, even nothing gas and landfill factors in mind and recycling measures and so on. So excellent work.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done for the city thus far. My questions, though, were very much the same. I just find that the size of, I just see some disproportionate measures amongst the seven members. You did very well in explaining that these fees are being distributed for not so much per trash can per se or per certain. I do think that the analysis involved per capita, some cities have more industrial areas, businesses and whatnot. So thank for my clarity. But I just feel as though they're not.
Of course.
Almost no industry, no commercial or industrial service and approximately seven hundred and fifty households.
Please, I know you guys help each other all the time. I hear you and a five-year process. And so years that are, if you were to go out on your own, it would be probably less than dollars, I think is a welcome to, you know, to give it or not. But together is wise. The cost sharing benefits are there when you have some of these larger cities carrying there goes, but
eighteen eighty-three programs, things like that, where it is services directly to our constituents and, and it is based on population. This is really a service to me and to the staff who otherwise would have to do this ourselves. And while we are smaller in drafting a contract, which franchise agreement really is, it's, it's not just because we're smaller doesn't mean that the contract is going to be that much different than, say, City of Monterey's would be or City of Seaside's. And so the work product would be approximately the same. So I appreciate where you all are coming from, because I'm always looking for ways to get something for cheaper for us as well and keep our costs down. But I, you know, I raised the same question at the TAC, just because I thought I'd try and get away with it. And I knew what the answer was going to be. But it's something that, that I, I think makes sense and is good for us. And like Kristen said, in the end, bang for the buck, we're getting a really good deal for this.
Thank you.
Well, I, in the community, I think we have greater understanding through this discussion. So now I'm feeling it's a good thing. And so I do hear about this.
Thank you. This is the cheaper option. Thank you.
Council member Shirley.
I have no questions. Kristen, thanks so much for being here. And city manager John, that was a good explanation, right? We all need one franchise agreement. We do not want to do it ourselves. And so let's take someone who's going to do it for us and then split it up several ways. I've always felt that your TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee for Regen, is one of the best committees on the peninsula. You bring together haulers and Regen and stakeholders and you work together to solve problems. This, you've tackled thirteen eighty-three brilliantly, better than probably anywhere in the state. And you're helping us with this. And so I greatly appreciate this effort, because yes, it takes, it takes it away from our staff. We don't want to have to deal with this. And so, and I, you know, I really appreciate the stakeholder information that they're going to gather with this. Yeah, we may end up with an RFP or we may end up with a contract extension, but I think the work will be done to get us to that decision at the end. I think we can all feel confident that it's going to be done well. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your presentation and all your efforts. What I would like to do now is take it out to the public if there are any public comments or questions. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council then for a motion.
Oh, I'll move to approve.
I second.
All right, we have motion in a second. All in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you again very much.
Thank you so much. Happy to come back anytime. Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to the other new business item, which is to consider approval of the contract for ClearGov for electronic development and management services.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try and share my screen again, so cross your fingers. Is there a way that I can share my web browser? If there's been come up. So there it is. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the item before you is, is a pretty basic one, and it's a contract that put on consent. But I think it would be a lot more fun for you guys what you're going to get for being this contract. Like I said, I'm, I'm a budget nerd, so this stuff makes me really excited. And we've been talking about this for a couple of years and doing this, and now we're finally pulling the trigger on it. So I want to show you by showing you what San Juan Batista has done over the last couple of years, where we are currently and what you guys can expect over the next year with approval tract. So, so what you see here before you, this is, this is San Juan Batista's budget from two thousand and sixteen. You know, looks pretty familiar, looks pretty, pretty much like what we have. It was built with Excel and Word. And it's pretty bare bones. And you know, you just get the basics, you get the numbers, you get one little chart about the org, organization. And it's really just number. You go through and this took a lot of time. This looks really basic. This takes a lot of time to build this because of the limitation of the software. And, you know, you got to put it in, cut and paste Word or Excel files and Excel documents and charts into Word. Really worked very well. And then you got to, you know, convert it into a PDF. And so if you see, it's, it's very basic. This is pretty much what our budget looks like right now. So that's just an example, you know, where we're, where we are currently. And then let's see, so this is this is what their budget looks like now. And so this is what they call a digital book. The great thing about this, you see all these charts and everything, all this information, you get this narrative now that explains the funds, explains departments. All of this is really point and click. This is easy stuff. The software does it for you. The software will pull the information from our finance system and already start to populate these charts for us and start to give, you know, people like me, I can look at this stuff as we go throughout the year and see where we're trending and how things are going. But so this is the, this is the regular boring print version of what they've got. So if you wanted to print a copy of their budget, you go on their website and the PDF that allows you to print it out and have a paper copy. But you can already see how, how much nicer it looks. You know, it breaks down things by function. You get the, like I said, you get the narrative. You just get a lot more information in a format that is easier to understand for laypeople and for decision makers. But for us, those of us who do the budget, the great thing about this is, is that this is going to exponentially shorten our time for developing the budget, because doing it in Excel and doing it in PDF and Word takes a long time to do. And this is really, like I said, point and click. And then the added fun part of this, it's fun for me. I don't, you guys probably don't think this is fun, but this is the sexy part. They also have a web component of it. This is the real digital book. And so this is where you can play with things. It's kind of interactive. It's a little fun. It's broken out. You can go around and look at things. So this is still the same budget book. But you see, you get headers over here. You can look at your budget overview, fund summaries. So if you want to see how your sewer enterprise fund is doing, it takes you straight to it. But then the charts are interactive. So the charts, instead of trying to figure out exactly where that line lines up, you just put your cursor over it and it gives you the actual numbers. So you can see exactly where you are in the budget. So we're going to have a lot of fun playing with this and presenting this to you all, especially to the budget committee and going through this over the next couple of months. But I'm really excited about this. I hope you guys are too. So anyway, I didn't want to just put this on consent. I wanted you guys to actually see what you're going to get for contracting, getting into this contract and the little amount that we're doing on this. And more importantly, what the community is going to get, because they can actually start to understand the budget and how it works. And it's not just me up here talking to people who show up. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
I'll first go to council member Berger.
Thank you, Mayor. So for the public, the benefit is that they can actually go on our website and see the budget move around it and understand it better and create questions. And for the staff, and it's, I know I'm repeating what you're saying, but just for the staff, it's going to save a lot of time, effort, and provide a better presentation. Does this information, so we, we work on the budget, but does this accounting firm? Do they? Does that melt easily? Or is there a whole other aspect to that is one question? And then I've seen the, so this is eleven thousand per year prepaid. Are there any other costs that we should be aware of?
So the first question, the accountants, they're, they're more interested in our financial management software, MIPS. And because that's where all the transactions are done, that's the actual day-to-day business of our finances. So that's what they focus on. You know, a budget is just a spending plan. And so that's really more for the administrative types like myself to, and for you all to make decisions and help guide those decisions. And then map out where we're going to go over the course of the year. So the accountants don't care so much about, I mean, they do, but I mean, software system is really where they that's what they dig into and look into for us. Yeah. And then the other questions. Yeah. And then the other questions, no, we shouldn't. If anything, it's not direct costs, but improved efficiencies are going to, you you're gonna see improved efficiencies in staff time. Uh, and then the biggest reliance on RGS, because right now we spend a lot of money on RGS and BATH, building our budget every year.
And I didn't see anything about any sort of inception uh fees or startup costs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right.
Right. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have no questions. See pictures, charts and uh bar graphs, a budget, it's readable, it's easily understandable. And I've been really like uh looking forward for this and uh and and I'm just so proud it's already is moving forward towards this really um like infographics and uh and it's so I know it's gonna be easier and that's what matters. And then uh because if we can really like make our processes efficient through modernization and that's the way to go. So so thank, thank you, John, for really like looking for what I look for, looking at this and uh Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I completely agree. You know, that was much better than just taking everyone else. It was consent to try to agenda. That was actually fun, and I'm not even a budget nerd. So thanks for your presentation. It's consistent. We looked at this from a couple of different angles before. This is consistent with the council direction to staff. And uh we've done the appropriate budgeting. And I think it's just um exemplary of yet another just huge positive lead forward due to due diligence of us. I see multiple deficits, as you've described, even though the accounting firm may not find it necessary. They still have it as a tool to refer to if needed. This will be helpful for the finance committee also. And of course, he's the path for uh for staff and all. I just think it's a good
All right. Councilmember Shirley.
Yeah, I'm excited about this. Thank you for the presentation. Um, will this give us any different printouts for monthly financials? Like obviously not the check register, but the other portions that we get for our financials, will those look any this is just budget in the year?
You know, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I I hope it'll inform those reports.
I hope so.
And change them. Yeah, it it should.
Okay.
Yeah, I I haven't dug into all the different modules that we get with this.
Yeah.
Yet, that's coming up. So I don't know, Karen, do you, do you know? They just started talking with them. I'm getting set up for training, so we haven't. Right, okay. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so stand by.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious when we'd actually maybe like visually see something in our packet from this.
Yeah, yeah. Marrying information from soft system to system uh can can have difficulties. Um, when we were doing our due diligence and I talked with other cities that use ClearGov, um, it was a little over the bor- all over the board, but not too too dissimilar with their experience in getting set up and going. So um most cities said that within a few months, they were up and running with this. Uh, even cities around our size. So so I'm anticipating that within the next couple of months, you'll start to see at the budget committee, we'll start to see how this is shaping up.
Good. And then so then, once we've integrated this, will this, will our current budget be on our site?
Not the current budget, but next year's. Yeah. Yeah.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Um, I'll take it out to the public. Uh, any public comments or questions? Okay, I'll bring it back. Um, yeah, we we've been looking to do this for a while. I mean, a lot of agencies have it and it's like to look at it and, you know, with the graphs and um the the current uh budget as it's as it's laid out. Yeah, it's uh, it's it's tough to look at and it and it doesn't capture your attention. And and this, we're finally getting there. And um I appreciate the hard work um to get to this point from the city manager and the staff. And I just look forward to to seeing it published and um, you know, interacting with it and maybe
So buckle up. Um, also, the chief asked me to remind everybody on September sixth, we'll have the police department open house here, fire also, right? Yeah, right here at City Hall. That'll be on Saturday, the sixth, from eleven AM to two PM. There will be tacos. So come. There will be tacos. And then also, they're probably done now, but just in case anybody who lives on Carlton wonders why. Well, hopefully they're done by now, but the um, there was a problem with traffic, I think, some of the work on Carlton. Uh, I know we have an ordinance that work has to stop by seven PM. Um, but the, I I believe that some of the materials that needed to get here so that they could finish the work that they have to finish today uh got held up in traffic and got here late. So they may possibly still be working, Mike, on your walk home. I don't think so, but people might be wondering why they're working after the approved times. And that's why it's because uh the 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 holes that they've opened up have to be filled back in before they can wrap up. So uh it's a safety issue. Um, so we're making an exception for this one time. If anybody asks.
City manager, in addition to tacos, I would say
Nice. Very nice.
Chief, can I ask?
Yeah.
Sorry, um parking for that day, where are we gonna direct people to park?
That's a question. There is no place to park, so engine here. And so like we'll park that. And I don't think getting to Ron's into our city yard necessarily is good. Well, two minutes to get there, so it's not a great.
So just like parking along Canyon Delray, that would be the recommendation?
I don't think so. And most people
It's a spark from our side. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
All right. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Um, council reports and correspondence are also in the packet. And our next meeting is Tuesday, September twenty-third at six PM. And with that, we are adjourned.